Things. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. On Zoom, I see Commissioner Akall, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Glenn Winkle, Commissioner Winter, and myself, Acting Chair Lawler, and there we have Chair Nye and Commissioner McCann are both excused this evening, absent and excused. We would normally have our visitor section of the agenda right now, but we are going to be holding that until the end of our meeting. So we will move ahead to commission communications. Commissioners, are there any communications for the good of the order? Commissioner Winter?
You said Commissioner Akall was here. Is that right?
That's.
Commissioner Akall has yet to join.
Oh.
I was gonna say, I don't see her beaming countenance.
Okay. Staff, can we still go ahead?
Four commissioners is sufficient for quorum, so yes, we can proceed.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I can't see all faces at once when I'm on this or anything, so appreciate that correction. Well, let's go to, again, commissioner, any more commissioner communications. Seeing none, we will move on to staff communication. Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Anas Latinsky, the Planning Division here in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. Tonight, I want to make people attending this meeting aware that a large number of offensive comments were provided by people calling into the Beaverton City Council meeting last night. First, I want to emphasize that the city of Beaverton is committed to supporting a culture of accountability, equity, and inclusion for all, especially for marginalized groups. And we pledge to continue the ongoing difficult and essential work needed to address institutional racism and historical inequities in all forms. Second, I want to make clear that this meeting will be conducted in a manner consistent with federal, state, and local law, with opportunities for public comment as follows, and this may be slightly redundant with other parts of the script, but I just want to be really clear that verbal testimony on land use agenda items will be allowed, as usual, under organ law. This testimony must be relevant to the land use applications being considered and must be responsive to the approval criteria that are identified. Speakers that are not responsive to the approval criteria or using profanity or obscenity may have their testimony time cut short. Comments on general matters not related to land use, the land use hearing agenda items, may be provided during the visitor comment period at the end of the meeting. These comments will be limited to one minute per speaker and a total of 10 minutes overall. Thank you.
Thank you for that. With that, let's move on to our new business. The first item on the agenda is the application for Westgate-Hall mixed-use development. Case file numbers CU2023-0003, DDR2023-0003, LLD2023-0002, and TP2023-0002. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code sections 40.03.1, Facilities Review Committee, 40.15.15.5.c, New Conditional Use, 40.23.15.3.c for Downtown Design Review III, 40.47.15.1.c for a legal lot determination, and 40.90.15.2.c for a tree plan II. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State law and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or site visits to declare? Let's begin with Commissioner Ellis.
No specific conflicts to declare, a frequent visitor either in the nearby shopping lot right next door to this or driving up the Downhall Boulevard, but nothing pursuant to this application, no contacts made, et cetera, so no conflicts, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I'm familiar with the site, but I have no conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Winter?
I have had no contacts, no conflicts, and I'm very familiar with the site.
Okay, thank you.
Although I did not make a specific site visit.
Okay. And I have no conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts, and I am familiar with the site, although I did not make a specific site visit for this item. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? And I see that there are no response. So let's go to the order of the public hearing tonight, which will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then, members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And then, members of the public who are neither in support of nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After the public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. And then, the Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So with that, let's begin with the staff presentation. I'm Ms. Smith. Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lena Smith, and I'm an associate planner. Before I get started, I'd just like to confirm that you received a supplemental memo earlier today. It was about, oh, great, perfect, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Tonight's presentation will be on the Westgate and Hall mixed-use development. The proposal is for a seven-story mixed-use building with 242 residential units, approximately 2,800 square feet of ground floor commercial space, and two floors of structured parking. The project is located at the intersection of Hall Boulevard and Westgate Drive. The site is about 1.85 acres in size and is in the central Beaverton neighborhood. The site is zoned Regional Center Mixed Use and is in the Downtown Design District. The first application is for a new conditional use. This is required because the applicant is proposing multi-dwelling residential units in the floodway fringe area. As detailed in the staff report, the project is conditioned to comply with all applicable floodplain regulations as part of the site development and building permit processes. Additionally, the city's floodplain manager reviewed the proposal and had no objections to the proposal. A conditional use also requires the applicant to demonstrate the project is compatible with the city's comprehensive plan and the surrounding neighborhood. As detailed in the staff report, the applicant has designed a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development in a location that is well-served by transit. Accordingly, staff finds the project is compatible with the surrounding commercial uses and is consistent with the goals of the Downtown Design District. The next application is for a Downtown Design Review III. The proposal meets the thresholds for a Type III application because the applicant requests to exceed the 75-foot maximum building height in the RCMU zone by approximately seven feet, and the applicant has elected to respond to more than three design guidelines. As detailed in the staff report, the project complies with all applicable design standards and guidelines. In particular, the design guideline for exceeding the 75-foot maximum building height requires the applicant to use design elements to reduce the mass of upper floors. The applicant has achieved this by stepping back the seventh floor by at least six feet from the street-facing facades. The guideline also requires the applicant to provide onsite creek access and enhancements. The applicant has achieved this by providing a pedestrian pathway and viewing area into the vegetated corridor natural area. The next application is for a legal lot determination. This is required because the site is not part of an existing recorded plat. The proposal meets the approval criteria to be deemed a legal lot because there are no minimum lot dimensions for the RCMU zone, and the applicant has demonstrated the lot has existed in its current configuration prior to January 1st, 2007. This slide shows the applicant's tree removal plan. The blue trees represent street trees, which will be regulated by the Site Development Division because they're located in the public right-of-way. The red trees represent vegetated corridor trees, which are regulated under the applicant's Tree Plan II application. And the other onsite trees are landscape trees, which are regulated under the Downtown Design Review. Staff finds removing the three vegetated corridor trees is approvable because the removals are necessary to accommodate the proposed development. Additionally, the vegetated corridor is subject to Clean Water Services regulations, and the applicant proposes to enhance this area with native plantings that have been approved by CWS. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the Westgate and Hall project, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff with regards to this proposed application?
Yeah, just an ignorance question, apologies. On the slide that showed the proposed layout with pedestrian pathway that leads back to the creek area, is that natural area otherwise publicly accessible? Public, I'm saying this correctly, for public enjoyment land, or is that land that the developer otherwise has to maintain?
It is part of their private property, so it would be for residents and visitors to the site.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
I could also have the applicant expand more during their portion as well.
Okay, that's clear, though, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? I, let me jump in. I had a, I think it's, I don't know, I noticed that, for example, on the there's a discussion about the vegetated corridor. And, let's see, it would be under Tree Plan II. Page, I wrote it down. 60. You had a very specific finding about working with Clean Water Services for purposes of, you know, protecting existing trees, et cetera. And then, when I looked at your condition of approval on pages 69 and 70, it was very simplified. It was just meet the Beaverton Code standards. In your mind, are those, does the Beaverton Code standards basically reiterate the clean water standards, or should that condition of approval be more specific?
So there is a condition of approval for the applicant to comply with the city's tree protection fencing standards, and there's also a general condition that references the Clean Water Services service provider letter.
Okay, okay, I must have missed that, okay. That's what I was looking for, yeah, because you had a very specific finding.
Yeah, they had very specific conditions in their service provider letter, so we put something referencing that letter.
Okay, and I did notice that their landscape plan had a whole variety of nice native planting, so destined for that area, so that's good. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, well, now, thank you very much. Let's turn to the applicant, who will have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourself, stating your names and addresses for the records. For the record.
My name is Matthew Jansen. I am a design principal with Anchormoisten Architects at 38 Northwest Davis in Portland, Oregon, 97209. And I will share my screen if that's okay. And the obligatory, you can see my screen? Yes, great, okay, thank you. As we know, this is, we're very excited to be here. Thank you for having us. I am going to skip these first two slides, since staff has already given us an overview of where the site is at and the applicable mixed use, and I'm gonna hand off here for the next couple of slides to Griffin from Cedar Street Development.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time. My name is Griffin Epping. I'm with Cedar Street Companies, located at 1020 West Lawrence Avenue, Suite 300, Chicago, Illinois, 60640. Matt, thanks for kicking us off. I just briefly wanted to take a minute or two here on the front end, just to give a little background about Cedar Street as a company and some of the projects we've worked on in the past. So, the slide here in front of you, you can see Cedar Street, we're a multifamily developer. We kind of handle everything in-house, so everything from acquiring the site, development, construction management, and then ultimately, property management, once the project is completed. Currently, we own about 40 assets comprising about 3,000 housing units across the country. Like I mentioned, we are based in Chicago, but we have a West Coast office in San Diego and then an office as well in Miami. Our most recent West Coast development is not too far from here, in Vancouver, Washington, in the waterfront mass development there. Similar scale project is the one we're proposing here, 226 units. And that building actually completed in August of this year, and it started to lease. We're pretty excited about that one, and that was another project that we did with Anchormoisten, so excited to do a second one with them. I mentioned this, but just quickly again, we manage all of our properties in-house, so, you know, everyone is fairly tightly knit, and we communicate very clearly with the development team and the design team and kind of everyone involved. One other thing I wanted to point out is we're long-term holders of real estate, so, you know, we're gonna acquire the site, build it, and then hold it for a minimum of 10 years and likely longer than that, so, you know, we're not a developer that buys, builds, and then, you know, kind of immediately sells, which I think is compelling. Let's go to the next slide.
Yeah, so, great, thanks, Chris. So we all know where the site is. We, as designers, always start off with a deep dive into where we're gonna be, and the significance of this site is not lost on us. Being just north of the round and the Max Line and being on Beaverton Creek within the center of Beaverton is extremely exciting, and the opportunity to bring a project of this sort to this location has got great opportunities. Just looking at the site, we've got Hall Boulevard to the north of us, which is quite heavy traffic, it's wide street. One thing to keep my eye on, Westgate running along the east side of our site is lighter traffic, day ore. We're doing a significant amount of street improvement along both streets, so excited about that. To the south, we've got Beaverton Creek with a 50-foot setback off of that vegetated corridor. And then, to the west of us, we've got the existing retail strip area with, as we look at it, potential for future development going down the road, something that we want to keep in mind. One of the important things to recognize about this site, because of the proximity to Beaverton Creek, we are in the 100-year floodplain, so everything on the site needs to be up out of that, which is necessitated, raising everything three feet off the existing grade. When we initially started this project, that was, oh, no. Now we've embraced it, and it actually has developed some real tangible benefits for the project, which we'll see as we move along. Just from the very onset of this project, we envisioned this as an inverted U layout for the building, and the reasons for that were to really take advantage of the view out over Beaverton Creek and the access to natural daylight along the south-facing facade. The other advantage to this is the development of of facades that face along Hall and Westgate, giving it a nice, what we would term an urban edge, and a nice response to that city side. We started thinking about it in that way very early on, that there was a city side, quote-unquote, to the east and a more nature composite side to the west. As we dug into the project, it started to develop into this idea of where the red lines are in plan here, a brick facade that starts to front the pedestrian right-of-way and the streets, and allowing the inner portions of the project in pink or purple, whatever this color is to you, facing towards the natural or vegetated corridor side, that that becomes a softer material. And then, introducing a third material in these internal recesses, there, we think of them as these recessed reveals that then help to give scale to the project overall. So it's not just big blank bars for all those purposes. Looking at the site plan, one of the first things we recognized is that there is an existing easement in the northwest corner of the site between us and the existing strip retail center. And we took that as an opportunity to utilize that easement to provide services to the back-of-house of the building. So our trash, our utilities, everything is gonna go through that easement and really utilize that to sort of hide those back-of-house services away from the public right-of-way, so that then we have an opportunity to front on Hall and Westgate the active uses of the project. If we move in a little bit closer here, and now we've just sort of reoriented the building so that it fits better on the screen, you can see that we have, at the 100% corner of Hall and Westgate intersection, we've got our lobby space. And you'll see within the renderings, one thing that Cedar Street does extremely well is they activate their lobby spaces with quite a bit of different types of uses. So the opportunity for people walking by or driving by to look up into this space with the large amount of glasses that we've provided, that active space will become, it will be lit up at night, it'll look very exciting. And we've got this dock high type of experience there. Because of the necessity to raise the building up three feet out of the 100-year floodplain, we've now got an opportunity to occupy outdoor seating, ramp, some stairs on either end of that, so that that also has an outdoor active experience. On the west-hand side of that Hall Boulevard facade, where we've got retail space, again, they also have this dock high plinth that they can spill out onto cafe, seating, those type of things, up high, off of the sidewalk, looking out over. I think it could be very exciting, and also, we have the stair that then ties back so that it has a relationship with the existing retail to the west. You can see this notch that we've introduced into the building for the trash trucks to come in and turn around, so they don't need to go onto the neighboring property. They come straight off of Hall, they pick up the trash and then leave back by way of Hall. So it's a nice back-of-house opportunity utilizing that easement. On the east side of the project along Westgate, we took the opportunity because this is our connector road down to the center port of Beaverton, that we put residential units right there with porches. Again, they're raised up three feet off of the sidewalk to give them a better, secure experience. Once we get up to the third floor, oh, last thing, internal parking, two levels of that. We're trying to internalize that and make it as least visible to the public right-of-way as possible. When we get up to the third floor now, we have the opportunity to bring in the residential units and an amenity deck that all they look onto and take advantage of the views out over Beaverton Creek. We'll see better drawings of that in a second. Here, we see a typical residential floor plan. Again, it's that inverted U. You can see that we also have, in different places, balconies looking out to break up again the overall massing of the project. As we get up to the top floor, now we've set back along Hall six feet and along Westgate eight feet. The footprint is smaller, so as to diminish the scale of the top floor and give it a less presence. And we've also introduced an amenity space in the northeast corner of the project to take advantage of these fantastic, and they are, we sent up a drone, we flew it up there, and the views out east towards Mount Hood and the distance are quite exceptional, I must say. This composite landscape plan then just starts to give a real nice understanding about what the street presence will be with landscaping and trees. And then, also, on the level-three amenity deck, this looks like a lot of trees and foliage. It is. We're doing something very similar to this with Cedar Street on Vancouver waterfront. One thing that I really appreciate about working with them as a client is that they come in and really start to gravitate to what is important to people within the region that they're developing in. And being from the Pacific Northwest, we are tree lovers. We love the outdoors, we love nature, and so that's what this amenity deck is about, and it's an homage really to being on the Beaverton Creek vegetated corridor, that it becomes an extension of that. We'll see a view of that later on as well. And here are some quick renderings, just to look at what that type of experience is like. We've got our amenity indoor space, we've got an outdoor plate or gathering space for people, and then, we've got our raised hot tub/spa/fire pit area. As we get to the elevations, one of the things early on that we established was, yes, this was gonna be a brick building facing towards the public right-of-way. We wanted to have a material that really had a sense of, this is residential work. This is gonna be here for a long time. There's a permanence to it that we really appreciate. The brick is a horizontal expression of a material with stacked windows, so everything is very ordered. As we get into these notches, so here, between the two bricks, that's recessed in, that notch material, which is a vertical metal, extends up and becomes the top floor material. So, brick horizontal, stacked windows, the inset is a vertical metal panel with stacked windows. And as we look on the back here, that softer material that has a conversation with the vegetated side, the natural side, that's a stucco, it's a smooth material, but the windows are not stacked. So that's where it gets a little bit more playful, a little bit of a wink and a nudge to the fact that we're having a conversation with the natural side of the project. The other thing that I would say about this is, this elevation that downtown is to the left, here's our entrance into the parking garage and the residential units at grade right here. We've introduced a metal panel that has a wood texture to it. Again, it's something that's gonna stand the test of time, but it has that warmth as for people that are walking along. Uh at the as for people that are walking along uh the public right away. One of the other things you'll notice about the elevation is the intent to create a true base middle top type of expression. Um, we do that on the corner as well here where we come to the intersection of Westgate and Hall. We're doubling up the windows here into us. Into an expression of a double height expression, even though we've got two floors. So that we still maintain a base, a middle and a top type of experience. As we rotate around to Hall Boulevard, we see that uh shape complete itself uh from the intersection with the balconies. We're still getting that double height uh experience. Um, and then you can see that raised plinth area with the um spill out for the lobbying uh space right here. As we come towards uh. The retail side of this elevation, again, we see the raised plinth with stairs on either side and ramping. Um, and the ability to spill out with some canopies as well um to provide some uh shelter uh during inclement weather. In the very right hand side of this, you can start to see the the parking garage uh for the residents recessed back. And again, the intent was to push that back as far as possible, so it's away and not visible from the public right away. Just a quick section to show or two sections, I guess. Uh, the top one is showing that relationship where we've got two trays of parking uh and then amenity deck. Um, and then on the right hand side here, this would be Hall Boulevard with the double height. Retail uh with the plinth facing towards Hall. One of the important things was uh being able to set back all the mechanical equipment so that. Folks walking on the other side of the street don't have any visible line of sight towards that mechanical equipment. And that works well as well on the Westgate side uh where we've got our lobby and amenity on the top floor. We'll end with a couple uh renderings uh just to give a sense of the overall uh look and feel of the project. So this would be standing, well. Don't do this, uh standing in the middle of the street at Westgate Hall uh as you're crossing. Uh, the intent here is really to give the project quite a bit of presence at this corner, it is a a significant. Uh, corner uh within the uh neighborhood. And the project really wants to sort of ground itself there. And allow as we move down uh Westgate towards the round and downtown uh start to sort of uh. Become a little bit more broken down uh um and and a little bit more neighborhoody as we head that way. As we then, if we're coming from downtown, I really uh enjoy this view because it starts to tell the story of the project quite a bit, I think. Uh, it's got the brick in the foreground that speaks to uh the public right away and the pedestrian experience. And then on the left hand side of the rendering, this more playful. Uh lighter material that's having a conversation with the natural side of the project. And then we can start to see just visibly through uh the tree canopy here, that third floor amenity deck that's overlooking Beaverton Creek. And the opportunity for people to be you'd be up there and looking back out over ten downtown. Uh, I think could be uh quite a sensational experience. This last rendering here would uh is on the Hall Boulevard side, I just wanted to really showcase sort of this is the back of house. Uh, it's uh where all the utilities and services go, we can see that. The 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 trash truck making its uh hammerhead turn into the building. Uh to sort of come back around and get out of the site without going on to the neighboring site or interfering with any of their um uh operations. As well, you can see um the parking garage, the intense here is again, that's a CMU material. And it's a ground face, uh give it a nice material. Um, but tr- kind of put it into the background and let it be backdrop for everything else that's happening. And focus everybody's attention on the public right away experience and the pedestrian experience rather than sort of that car experience at the back. Looking at the materials, just as an overall, uh we've got three main materials, the brick, the stucco. And the me- I'm sorry, the metal panel. The stucco, the brick and the metal panel there, yes, up on the top floor. Um, and so um. One of the things that I would say again, sort of reiterate is that the brick uh has got that beautiful texture to it. The metal panel here is a vertical texture, we've taken this uh series, these are not the colors. Um, but the ability to sort of take uh a panel that has a different uh series of uh extrusions that we can play with. To give it a little bit more of a texture. Um, and then allowing that stucco to be more of a smooth material and uh become that backdrop uh in the vegetated corridor. And I think that's all I have, but I would like to very much like to thank staff. Uh for the work uh that we have done over the past many months, uh it has been a terrific experience. Uh, and like to thank staff for the recommendation of approval and agree with uh all their conditions and approvals. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant with regard to the proposed application? And maybe if you could. Stop screen sharing so we could see our fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Yes, sorry about that.
No worries. Any commissioner questions? Okay. Looks like you've answered all of our questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let us now move on to the public testimony portion of our agenda of this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. Then those in opposition to the application and then those who are neither in favor nor in opposition. And as a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to this application. Verbal testimony that includes profanity or obscenity may be terminated without additional warning. So now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Looks like we have no one. Do. So we do not have any test public testimony via the web, now is the time for public testimony. In opposition to the application. Again, for those viewing via Zoom webinar, communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. And if calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And looks like we have no one out there in opposition. Now is the time for those who wish to speak and neither uh in favor nor opposed. For those again viewing the Zoom webinar, communicate by using raise hand feature. In your Zoom menu bar and if calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And again, no one. Staff has indicated that we do not have any public testimony, neither in favor nor opposed via the web. So that negates the need for applicants rebuttal. So with that, let's turn to. Final staff comments, staff, do you have any final comments to make?
No final comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. With that. Uh, I will close the public hearing. And as a standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Ellis, would you like to begin?
Uh, sure, yeah, um, I I didn't have any questions for the applicant because quite frankly, I I uh thought the. Presentation and the materials were relatively complete and um. The designs, um, the decisions made in terms of uh what conditional uses were required. Um, it it seemed really straightforward and the building looks great, uh I didn't have any major takeaways from that and. I appreciate seeing something done with that particular corner of Hall Boulevard too, it's been sad since the grill went down. Um, so yeah, I have I have no negative takeaways here and am a supportive of uh the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Um, yes, thank you, I think this is a great project, I think the location for it is perfect. Um, I love to see the number of units going in because we need more housing in Beaverton. Um, especially this infill development, I think it's it's a great project. And staff did a great job vetting it for us, um, I think it meets the approval criteria and I'm happy to support.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Winter.
Yeah, I I think a lot of us have been very um curious how the floodplain issues in this. Part of the city were going to be addressed. And I think this is about as good as it's ever going to be, this beautiful project, glad to see it going vertical well. And so I have no complaints, beats all the criteria as far as.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will concur with my fellow commissioners that I think it's um a wonderful project, a great location. And it's always nice when you work on code standards like such as the downtown development plan where we talked about stepping back the height to kind of maintain. Uh solar exposure for those on the street that um here's a project that has implemented. That and it's a it's a it really is a beautiful, a beautiful building and I. Especially appreciate a lot of the detail that goes into the architecture because some of the renderings things look just all black. Um, when I was looking at, but then when they showed the details, I see that there's like two or three different material types within that. Same color scheme, so there's a lot of detail to um to this design. And um. I think the architect did a great job and I love the fact that you're emphasizing the creek, I always think that um multifamily. Folks, when they have smaller spaces to live in, they should have the luxury of enjoying the outdoors as much as possible and I think this um. Your the shape of the building really maximizes that, so I I uh applaud you on that. So um, I think we are somewhat in agreement, so would um um one of my fellow commissioners care to make a motion? To either continue or approve or deny this application?
I'd be happy to make a motion. I move that the commission approve uh the applications including CU two zero two three dash zero 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 three. DDR two zero two three dash zero 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 eight. LLD two zero two three dash zero 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 two. And TP two zero two three dash zero 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 two, based on the facts and findings presented herein. Uh including today's supplemental memo dated October fourth, uh subject to all applicable uh conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis, for that motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle seconded the motion. A vote will be, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's move to a rule called vote. When your name is called, please indicate your vote by expressing aye or nay. Commissioner Ellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, that motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. And the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. Thank you very much, everyone involved in this project. So let's move on to the second item on our agenda. This is an application for case file LU. Three two O two three dash zero zero five three seven. The Bronson Road Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. Case file numbers CPMA. Three two O two three dash zero zero five three five. And ZMA three two O two three dash zero zero five three six. The planning commission's decision to recommend adoption. Of a zoning map amendment must be based on consideration of, one. The statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted under ORS chapter one nine seven. Two, applicable federal or state statutes or rules. Three, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro. And four, the city's comprehensive plan and development code, including. Comprehensive Plan Section one point five point one point A. Comprehensive Plan Amendment quasi judicial. And Development Code Section four O dot nine seven dot one five dot one. Zoning Map Amendment quasi judicial. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria. Or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission or other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. May preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. And failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity. To allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. State law and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact or site visits to declare? Let's start with Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, no to all three. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
Midnight, may I interrupt for a second? This is Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. Um, I'd like to just note for the record that Commissioner Akall has joined our meeting. And so I'd like to make sure her presence is noted in the record. Thank you.
Oh, welcome.
That's all.
We are now, oh, thank you very much for that. We are on the second item, Commissioner Akall, and we are at the point in which we all declare whether we have any. Potential or actual conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts or site visits to declare. And we are speaking of the uh Bronson Road Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, would you like to respond?
Sure, none to all three.
Okay, thank you very much. And Commissioner Ellis?
I know it's all three as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
No to all three.
Okay, thank you, and Commissioner Winter?
No to all three.
And I will respond to no to all three as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte context or site visits? Or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? I see that uh let the records show that there is no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And then members of the public who are neither in in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. And after public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. And then the planning commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So with that, let's begin the staff presentation, I believe Mr. Cannon. Please begin.
Yes, thank you, let me share my screen, get everything set up, will you guys? All right, great, uh, good evening Chair Lawler and Commissioners, I'm Brett Cannon, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The proposals before you tonight are a comprehensive plan map amendment and a zoning map amendment associated with project LU three. Twenty twenty three dash zero zero five three seven Bronson Road CPA ZMA.
Um, hey, uh Brett, real fast, just so you know, you're showing us the presenter view of your slides, if that matters.
Yeah, that matters, um, thank you. Yeah, that matters. Um, thank you. Let's uh try that again. Screen three, perfect.
There we go. Thanks.
Yeah, of course. No, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so prior to moving forward with the rest of the proposal, uh Planning Manager, Honest Latinsky is going to provide some background and history of the site.
Thank you, Honest Latinsky, Planning Division Manager. There are a few unusual aspects of these applications, so uh I just wanted to chime in and provide a little extra background. When property is annexed to the city, the county land use designations and zoning are replaced with city land use designations and zoning through this crosswalk document in the comprehensive plan. For this project, the timing of the annexation coincided with changes to a bunch of zoning designations both on the city side and on the county side because we were in the midst of implementing HB two thousand one, which in Beaverton was done through the Housing Options Project. And so that crosswalk was basically in the process of being updated in a kind of in a way that made it awkward for this project. So these policy changes made it very difficult to identify the appropriate zoning at the time of annexation. So this this later CPA ZMA was needed to put the appropriate designations in place, and the city agreed to act as the applicant. While the site developer agreed to hire a consultant to provide the transportation analysis that was required uh for um for these particular applications to go forward. I also want to explain a little bit more about the site configuration, which is a little bit complicated. Um, the um you'll see a little bit of a sliver at the top. Um, and this was actually a remnant parcel that was left over from the construction of Bronson. Um, and so this led to a little bit of a complicated process to consolidate the properties. There were some complicated ownership transitions um uh that I'm not going to go into here, but but you'll see it show up a little bit in some of the maps that you that you uh saw in the package and that you'll see in the presentation don't all have the exact same geometry. And the reason is that there there was this um kind of uh unusually complex ownership and policy designation. Um, one example of that is that that little silver at the top actually didn't need to be annexed to the city because it was already part of the city. So I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of additional information. Hopefully that helps address any um any confusion and myself or Brett um can follow up further. But at this point, I'm going to uh let Mr. Cannon continue with the regularly programmed presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. All right, so move forward with the proposal. Uh, it's a discretionary quasi judicial comprehensive plan map amendment to apply a city land use designation to the subject site and a discretionary quasi judicial zoning map amendment to apply a city zoning district to the subject site. And staff just wants to note that this proposal does not include like any specific development or any specific uses. So this map shows the location of the subject parcel, which is identified in blue. So the light yellow areas primarily to the south and west are Beaverton city limits. And the light gray areas primarily to the east and north are Washington County unincorporated limits. The site takes access via Northwest Bronson Road and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling and accessory structures. So first staff will address the comprehensive plan map amendment. Uh, the comprehensive plan and zoning district matrix is found in the land use element of the comprehensive plan, Chapter three. Uh, seen on this slide is an excerpt from that table showing the city's regional commercial designation and the associated zoning districts. So the staff proposes that the subject site be assigned the regional commercial land use designation, which is highlighted in yellow. So this map, uh it shows the county land use districts and the city land use designations which surround the site. Uh, the site's highlighted with those blue borders directly in the middle of the map and you had you can see the RC there on it. Um, so again, the subject site abuts the city's interim Washington County designation. Uh, that's kind of a light green right there. It's to the south and to the west. And that's to the south is basically all Sunset Highway, Highway twenty six. And then additionally, Washington County's institutional designation is to the east right there, the par- the parcel abutting directly to the east. And finally, Washington County's residential designation is across its street to the north of Bronson Road. So the applicable approval criteria for the complent amendment are the following. It's that the designation is consistent with statewide planning goals, consistent with regional plans, excuse me, metro regional plans, and consistent with city comprehensive plan policies. Um, so the subject site properly, it currently carries the low density neighborhoods designation. And we're proposing to to be a regional commercial. So a few reasons staff find regional commercial to be recommended are the following. Um, because the subject site is in an area with access to an arterial, which is Northwest Beth- Bethany, and access via a collector Northwest Bronson Road and near Highway twenty six. This is consistent with comprehensive plan policy three point seven point two point C, which states the regional commercial designation may be applied in areas along highways and major arterials with high visibility and auto accessibility. Uh, second, it increases the commercial opportunities of the site through the implementation of any of those corresponding zoning districts that we showed you on the previous slide. Uh, this is consistent with goal three point seven point two, while also allowing the continued opportunity for housing when you implement the general commercial zoning district, which will be discussed in the next few slides. And this is consistent with goal four point one point one point C, which encourages higher density residential development on commercially zoned sites. For these reasons, staff finds that the application satisfies comprehensive plan section one point five point one point A point one through three for discretionary quasi judicial comprehensive plan amendments. All right, so the second application is the zoning map amendment. So this slide shows the four implementing zoning districts of the regional commercial comprehensive plan designation as seen on the previous slide. Um, those are corridor commercial, community service, Washington Square Regional Center, and general commercial. And staff is proposing that the subject site be assigned the general commercial zoning district, which is highlighted in yellow. All right, so this map shows the county land use districts and city zoning districts surrounding the site. Again, the subject parcel abuts the city's interim Washington County designation to the south and west and Washington County's institutional designation to the east and the residential designation to the north across from Bronson. All right, so the applicable criteria for a zoning map amendment are found in section forty ninety seven one five point one point C. Uh, so to summarize, as it writes a chapter for housing, uh while the proposal is to change zoning from a residential district to a commercial, uh there will be negligible impact on the housing choice. Um, and there will be an increase in housing capacity with the addition of multifamily as an allowed use in the general commercial zone. Uh, the GC zone will increase density by dropping land area requirements from anywhere between four thousand and thirteen hundred square feet per unit to one thousand square feet per unit. Uh, additionally, transportation was analyzed via a traffic impact analysis, which identif- which again identified negligible impacts to the surrounding transportation network. Uh, some of these are the proposed zone change would create only a modest increase in expected trip generation of three hundred and fifty seven weekday trips when comparing the reasonable worst case scenarios of the existing R and B zoning district and versus the proposed zoning designation of general commercial. Additionally, no queuing issues are expected on Southwest Beth- Bethany Boulevard or Southwest Bronson Road, and signal upgrades will not be required. Um, and then additionally, just the memo you received this morning. Uh, staff just wants to note that that supplemental memo and which was an addendum to the TIA was provided by Lancaster Mobley in response to comments received from Oregon Department of Transportation Staff. Uh, city staff agree with the additional analysis, which demonstrates compliance with ODOT Development Review Guidelines and Hor- Oregon Highway Plan Action one F point five. In summary, staff agree with the original TIA and the addendum to the TIA, which state that the proposed plan amendments will not cause a significant effect to the state transportation network as defined in the OHP. For these reasons, staff find that the approval criteria for zoning map amendment have been satisfied, and the most appropriate zone for the subject property is general commercial. Therefore, staff recommends approval of LU three twenty twenty three dash zero zero five three seven Bronson Road CPA ZMA and the associated case files. Uh, to be clear, planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded as an approval to city council to adopt an ordinance applying the regional commercial land use designation and general commercial zone. This concludes staff's presentation is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cannon. Uh, do we have any questions of staff regarding the proposed application? Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, yeah, and apologies if I missed this either in the report or in your presentation. What's the um like, what's the actual impetus for the change? Like, who's who's asking for it? And because it it just says city of Beaverton is requesting. Is there a reason?
So so part of it was, I don't know if Anna you want to chime in on that as well, the impetus?
Yeah, sure. So the this is this is in order to prepare the property for development. So there is a developer that is interested in developing the site. They consolidated the site. They need to annex to the city. Um, they need to uh get the regulations in place. I'm not sure how many annexations um we've discussed together, but when property property is required to annex to the city when it requires city services. Um, but but property owners can also choose to annex to the city if the 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 land use regulations and zoning in the city makes more sense for their development. There are some differences between the way the county and the city regulate development. Um, and so um and so those are both reasons that property can annex at times. In this case, the annexation and applying the land use designations and zoning is a prelude to coming forward with a development proposal. So before development can occur, there will be land use application process related to actually moving that development forwards. But that application is not before the commission tonight. The the land use applications that are here for the commission to consider the recommendation are the application of the land use designation um for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning designation um through the zoning map amendment. So there will be a future land use application for development that will be subject to all of the all of the relevant um code requirements um in Beaverton's various regulatory documents. Um, but for the purpose of the planning commission review tonight, it's really the policy, it's really the policy perspective around is this land land use designation appropriate pursuant to the policies and approval criteria? Is the zoning designation appropriate pursuant to those criteria? And those are really the those are really the questions that the commission is being asked to um to weigh on tonight.
Sure, yeah, and and that makes sense. I think the the reason I asked that question is because a lot of the commentary in the staff report talks about the the recommended zone allowing for higher density housing, different housing scenarios, et cetera. And and so my my thought process was if that is a if that is a a supporting argument for recommending this, was there backend thoughts on there is housing development coming this direction uh at some point? Or is there an unforeseen thing where if we if we do the change of the zone, does that open this area up for somebody to come in and put a commercial installation in place, which would would be counter to the to the goal of providing additional housing and kind of makes makes moot
Yeah.
the argu- the argument there?
So I think what I what I would suggest is that really look at the location of the site. Look at the comprehensive plan policies that apply to locations like this. And those are some of the some of the comprehensive plan policies that Brett um actually read during his presentation. They're also included in the staff report. Um, when we when we make legislative land use decisions such as applying a land use designation or a zoning district, we actually do it based on very broad criteria that looks at what our policies say about land use for locations without making any assumptions about which of a range of uses that could be placed there would happen. General commercial district is a district that allows a very wide range of uses, um a very full spectrum of commercial uses, residentially residential use of a fairly high density. Um, and so it is it is a zoning district that could result in a lot of different kinds of development. Your job tonight is to apply the approval criteria for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning map amendment that really encompasses the potential for any of those things to be developed. Um, so Brian, please go ahead and chime in um if you want to provide more information about about the housing related question.
Hi, everyone. Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. Uh, I just wanted to provide one additional piece of information about the context in which that residential potential is discussed. Uh, we're required to make findings for goal ten, which is the housing goal for the state. And one of the things they want to see is whether the potential for housing uh is changing. Not, it's not about whether it's going to be developed that way or not. It's really the the theoretical potential for housing on the site. Is it going up or down? If that's what goal ten is concerned about. So that's why we spend a lot of time making findings about like how much the maximum residential you could get now versus the maximum residential we get later. It doesn't mean residential is expected or guaranteed or anything on the site. It's just responding to the goal uh and the questions the goal is asking.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great question. Thank you. Anybody else have questions of staff? Okay. Thank you very much. So now we are at the point where we can entertain public testimony at our meeting. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those who are neither in favor nor in opposition. And as a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Verbal testimony that includes profanity or obscenity may be terminated without additional warning. So now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. And I see there are none. Are there anyone, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Oh, I forgot to mention that if you are viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using your raise hand feature in your menu bar. And if calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. So anyone in opposition to the application? And I see that none. Now's the time for those to speak who are neither in favor nor opposed. And again, if you're viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. And if calling in, use star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And I see again that we do not have any public testimony in favor, opposed, or just neutral. So with that, uh, we don't need to have any applicants rebuttal. And um we can now entertain any final staff comments.
No final comments.
Thank you very much. So so let's uh with that, close the with final comments completed, I will close the public hearing and as standard procedure, randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Akai? Akall, excuse me.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, I I'm gonna sound difficult. Um, I I understand that I understand that my that our scope here and our role is to vote on on the conditions of approval. And and I think that this is one of those disagree and commit moments. So I'll I'll probably end up voting yes, because by the letter of the law, it does look like the application meets the conditions. Um, uh, just on on a personal note, if if the intention is to Um, uh, just on, on a personal note, if, if the intention is to, is to grow both the capacity potential and then eventually the true capacity of housing, I, I would have loved to have seen, uh, what, you know, what the next step looks like or, or any other conditional, any other conditions that would apply to further promote housing on the unit, because it just as it stands on paper, converting it to commercial just allows any other business or any other developer to put in, you know, put, put that kind of work into this space, uh, which, which again is counter to some of the goals represented here around housing. Um, but I'll, I'll stop there and, and just purely on the, on the pure merits of what's in the staff report. Um, I, I, I see why it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, I would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Winter?
Yes, I agree. I think it's fairly straightforward and it meets all the criteria.
Okay. And I think it meets a criteria, and I also reflect on the fact that it's immediately adjacent to a, a highway and, and probably, uh, in my, in my view, not the best, uh, location for any high-density residential. So my thought, um, let's turn to, um, a motion. Does anyone wish to make a motion to recommend an action to the City Council on this? Anyone? Commissioner Winter?
Yeah, I, I move to approve. EM, I move to recommend to City Council for approval. CPM eight thirty-two zero two three dash zero zero five three five. The facts and findings in the staff report dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three with the additional, um, additional information.
Okay. Commissioner Winter moved. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
And Commissioner Glenn Went, Winkle seconded the motion. So we will take our vote by roll call, and when your name is called, please indicate your vote by saying aye or nay. Commissioner Akall?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that a motion passes unanimously. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to City Council, and the council will hold a hearing and make a, the final decision on this application.
Apologies, Commissioner Lawler. I think, um, Commissioner Winter, you only did the first one, right?
That's correct. I was.
I'm sorry.
Very must have a dinner date.
Well, um, let's have another motion.
I move to recommend approval of the City Council of CMA thirty-two zero two three dash zero zero five three six based on the facts and findings in the staff report dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and three, including the supplemental memo received today.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Winter made a motion for recommendation. Do I have a second?
I will second.
And Commissioner Glenn Winkle seconded that motion. Let's take that vote on the zoning map amendment by roll call. When your name is called, please indicate by saying aye or nay. Commissioner Akall?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. And now we'll say that both of these items, uh, will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. The Planning Commission's recommendations will be forwarded to City Council, who will hold a hearing and make a final decision on these applications. Okay, thank you. Now we will turn to the visitor section of our agenda, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda issue or item. Anyone wishing to speak should indicate this to staff and wait for your name to be called. Testimony is limited to one minute per speaker, and the total time for visitor comments will be limited to ten minutes. Does anyone wish to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda issue? Okay, looks, staff has indicated that we have no callers or participants. So with that, I believe our meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six.
Thanks.